Yeah, click on that one. Okay, we will get started. Do I actually have to use this?
Yeah.
For fun.
Sure.
Okay. I am going to call to order the Middleton School Committee meeting. Today is Monday, October 6th, and it is 5:30 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No remarks from the public? Okay. Okay, so moving on to approval of previous minutes. And in the drive, there are minutes from the September 8th meeting. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from September 8th.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so all set with that? Reports from committees. Any other committees besides CPAC? Okay.
PTO, but I don't know, that's probably not till November, Bettina, right?
Next month they're gonna try to come to a meeting.
Okay. So for CPAC, our next meeting is... We actually had our first meeting at Aroma Joe's, which was lovely. They do a lot for the community. Had a few new faces. And the next meeting for Tri-Town CPAC is Wednesday, October, I believe it's 15th. That's the Wednesday. It will be 7 o'clock in the Masco Middle School Library. And then also, just as a side note related to CPAC, today, the Tri-Town Inclusive Rock Band Director, Ms. Monti, and myself were interviewed by Kendra Petroni on Magic 106.7. And the interview will air tomorrow morning at 8:10 on the radio. Just so if people are interested in learning more about the rock band, that was a great oppor- great opportunity to have. So tune in.
That's awesome.
It is great. That was a program... No, that was Sparkford before COVID, right?
Yes, yeah.
Before prior to COVID with Andrea when she was still working there, I think.
It was 10... It started 10 years ago.
Was it really 10 years ago? Oh, my God.
Yep. She was talking about some of the beginning histories of like what really got it going. And then, you know, to the point where it became a band. It started with some individual student needs that she wanted to do more for. And then how it formed into the band, which is thriving.
Think about those kids who are out of co- I mean, out of high school now, at least.
Yeah, and one of the peer mentors, who was an originator of the rock band, actually did a video for his college application. It's still on YouTube if you ever look it up, the Spark Rock Band. And he does a huge deep dive into the history of it. And he interviewed all the kids, and it's very cool.
Such an incredible program. So keep an ear out for that.
Yeah.
Any other reports on anything else? Any questions? Okay. Moving on to report from the superintendent.
Great, good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. A couple of updates from the past month or so. All the meetings that we've had, conversations that we've had. So the first of which, we had a meeting with NRT. As I said, in one of the other towns recently, the sort of the thunder cloud of transportation challenges tends to make its way over each town, you know, every year. Middleton had a year a few years ago where we had some transportation challenges. Boxford had a year a few years ago. It seems to be over Topsfield right now, where we're having some difficulties with consistent drivers and routes being long and pickups being delayed and all of those things. To an extent, that shouldn't be present in October. We expect it in the beginning of the year, but certainly not by this time of the year. So Steve and I were getting frustrated for sure. And so we had asked to meet with NRT, with our school committee representative. So Jackie was there. Barbara was there from Boxford. And Topsfield had Emily King was there as well from Topsfield. And we were able to share our concern, you know, as I said to them, we are not an organization that stomps our feet. We try to be good partners. We try to work with people and see if we can come to solutions. But I said, this has been five years now. We're now officially stomping our feet. This needs to get fixed with the Tri-Town. Like, we're done trying to lean into fastballs and trying to be a good partner with NRT. And they heard that and they understood that, and obviously, quote-unquote, stomping our feet. But just this idea of, you know, we're trying to work with you, but now this just needs to get fixed because it's been too long. And so we were able to identify a number of concerns and issues that have come up over the past couple of years. And the... Steve, who was Scott Sheridan? He was a VP?
He's a VP, he's a regional manager, regionals.
Okay.
Yeah, so senior VP or VP.
And what I thought was good in terms of us, them realizing how frustrated we have been. You might know John McCarthy. John's a Middleton resident. Good guy. We've had a long-time relationship with John when he was owner of NRT. And we had that personal touch, and we would problem solve. We might disagree, but we would always get, you know, the thing wrestled to the ground as we had to wrestle it to the ground. John's still an owner now in this bigger company that is NRT, that's part of Beacon Connect and all that. John's like a one-fifth owner. He came to the meeting, which I thought that was impressive, that he came to the meeting as the owner of the company, knowing that we were upset and concerned and frustrated about what's been happening. So I really appreciated John being there and hearing us out and offering his thoughts and opinion on it. So at the end of the day, we really tried to identify areas that they can improve service. And Steve, jump in if I miss anything here. But one of the key things was, they've had a $5,000 sign-on bonus for anyone with a CDL license to try to attract people because we just don't have enough drivers. Outside in the parking lot before the meeting, they upped it to 10,000. Outside in the parking lot at the end of the meeting, they upped it to 15,000. So that was very good. Like, they're understanding, like, you guys need to do a big push for CDL drivers. They are increasing recruitment staffing to help with recruitment in this area. They're increasing dispatch staffing because our concern is, Lee is outstanding. She's great. She should be in the office problem solving. She's oftentimes driving a bus. So we're trying to get in touch with Lee. She's on a bus, you know, moving kids around, which again, that's the priority, in making sure kids get from A to B in a good spot. Our other big thing was, how in the world are there not like a tablet on the bus at this point that has a GPS on it? Like, it's... We all have Waze on our phone. And believe it or not, we learned that there was a law in place for a long time that that would be considered a distraction for the bus driver. And, you know, I'm not sure how that's any more distracting than the piece of paper that they're, you know, holding from stop to stop or whatever the case may be. So we had asked them to reach out to Bus Right. Bus Right is an organization that young, young college kid like four or five years ago came to see Steve and I. He's like, I got this great idea for a bus transportation software, and I think it would be really cool. And I remember saying to him, you are on to an amazing idea. I think you're gonna hit it with this. And we can't negotiate with you because we're with NRT. You need to go talk to them. He's gone on, and we keep getting the emails from him, and he's taking his product nationwide. Like, good for this... I call him a kid because he was a kid when he came to visit us. So I asked NRT, could they reach out to Bus Right? He's already got the tablets. He's already got the routing software. Like, let's partner with somebody that we're not reinventing the wheel. We're gonna look for a permanent driver for Bus 28, which is one of our biggest issues in Topsfield. Work on improving communications, updating drivers and dispatch support. Steve and Jackie, you guys are both there as well. Any other takeaways that you had from that meeting?
That sums it up for Middleton. We have... We need two permanent drivers in Middleton. I think they have permanent subs right now.
If you can speak up a little bit, because Paul said with the AC on, it's tough for the bikes to get it.
Can you hear me, Paul? Anyways, we're... I think we're down to two buses in Middleton that we want to get squared away with permanent drivers. I think they have permanent subs. And Jeff, in my correct me if I misspeak on that. So that's the immediate Middleton. There are the issues that Middleton has in terms of late buses, so on and so forth. They're not as... They're not great, but they're not as bad as what we're navigating in another town. Is that accurate?
No, I think that sums it up. It was helpful. I couldn't fully hear the whole thing because I was in my car and it was breaking up. But it was clear that they were trying to actually find some solutions to move forward. And it felt like it was a productive meeting.
Yeah.
And again, Middleton, to the best of my knowledge, from what we've heard, is in a much better place than, say, Topsfield is this year, so.
Yes. And Steve, I know we had asked for a follow-up meeting a week from last week. Have they reached back out?
So I'm seeing, going through the emails now for Zoom calls. So we'll make sure that that's all in place.
I know I have a bunch of holes on my calendar. I think I'll lean for a potential Zoom. I just don't know if one's been... Okay. So are you waiting on Mary Ann or Lee or...
Coca got back to me, but she needed to check with team and then she was going to go back.
Okay. All right, well, our hope is to have a follow-up meeting this week, and we'll keep this committee apprised of any developments at the November meeting for sure. Yeah. So any questions on that for anybody? Good, good. Okay. Unit AB, integrated contracts. So we are continuing that process. We had a very successful and productive negotiation process last January to June. A lot of gratitude for our local associations and for the MTA as we partnered in that, along with all of our school committees and all the work that the reps did to bring that to a successful conclusion. So we've been spending the past, you know, couple of months just integrating all the contracts. I know that sounds like it should be easier than it necessarily is, but there's literally four or five of us sitting around a table with it up on the screen. We're there with Kevin from the MTA. And we're making sure, like, language that we're taking out, language that we're putting in, cleaning up language, modernizing it, making sure that all the headings are looking similar and all the subheadings are looking similar. It's the closest the three contracts have been in the 10 years that I have been here. They were very different a long time ago. And we have really worked to try to bring them under one roof. And we've come a long way in all those negotiation cycles. And again, a lot of gratitude to everybody who's been a part of that. So I think it's really close. Michelle, you might have got an email with signatures maybe?
Yep.
Dave, did you get one? Email, okay. So your guys are okay to sign. Were you really negotiating with some of many members? So if you get a chance, if you haven't already, if you could do the electronic signature, Kevin can then get them out to his members. We can start to meet with our administrative teams. Let folks know this is the new and updated contract language, and we will go from there. Questions on that from anybody? Pretty easy process, right? The signature thing, it was like a click and sign. Yeah. NEC and Crest, couple of updates from them. NEC, as you know, is our public consortium, and Crest is as well, that we work with for students that may have diverse learning needs that we may need their support with. So just a couple of updates from them. They had... NEC had a good summer program. They had 326 students enrolled. They've received a five-year grant of $70,000 a year from the Tower Foundation for General Operating Support. They plan on using that for some curriculum initiatives in '25 and '26. They finished the HVAC project at 112 Soyol Row. That's something we've talked about in this group over the years. That's been a big capital project at NEC. And their Recovery High School Program. They had the Rennie Center come in and really do an analysis of Recovery High School. Tremendous program, costs a lot of money. And so just trying to make sure they can strike that balance of making sure the kids get the support they need and at the same time, being able to financially support it. They gotta put a team together to continue to review the findings from the Rennie Center. And then Crest, they had a very well-attended extended school year program as well with their changes to the Articles Agreement, which we did in this group last year, and the removal of the 20% tuition premium to non-members. Crest's summer tuition increased 14%. And their total summer revenue was nearly 12% above last year's. And I think a lot of that was due to the non-member tuition we were able to raise more money for. GESI has informed Crest that their vendor will perform a financial review on Crest in '26. And the Executive Director, Bob Jokla, attended the Association of Education Services Conference, had an opportunity to talk with some of the congressional legislative aides about workforce training initiatives for students that are part of the Crest program. So those are our general Crest and NEC updates. And when their annual reports are done, I'll make sure there's a copy on the drive for those next time around. Also in the drive is the efficiency study. We've spent some time, appreciate all the school committees supporting us in this endeavor. Last year, as we navigated this with Mary Ellen Norman. Mary Ellen came in and did a summary of her efficiency study at the September meeting. And I had asked her to make an executive summary because that report is long. It's like 59 or 60 pages long. It can be a lot to digest. She took a really deep dive, and we are extraordinarily grateful for that. But the four-page summary in the drive, it says Efficiency Study Summary. It basically gives the highlights, the takeaways, the next steps, some immediate action items, some intermediate action items, and some long-term action items as well. And so Steve and I are going to start to execute on this. The next step and the real first goal, as you know, there were three recommendations in the report. And one of the first ones was making sure the finance teams at each of the town halls has a strong understanding of how we function and operate from a vision and pillar perspective. And then really trying to see if we can update charts of accounts and have more common processes and procedures at the three town halls. It's kind of clunky policy work. It's not front-of-the-house stuff. It's back-of-the-house stuff, but it makes us more efficient if we can clean up that back-of-the-house stuff. So just today, this morning, I sent the full document, the 59-page or 60-page report, and then this four-page summary to three town halls, their finance teams. Steve Greenberg, Steve and I are gonna get together this week, map out a timeline for us to meet individually with those three town halls, talk about some potential things that we might be able to do, and then also start to pull them together as a larger group. As you can see on the implementation timeline there, Mary Ellen has kind of laid out some steps for us to take. So looking forward to this work. It's important work if we want to continue to be an efficient organization. Happy to take any questions or feedback on the efficiency study.
I think it's great if we can, you know, make things more streamlined, save everybody time and maybe money, and try to make everything, especially the budget process, more streamlined. I think that would be great. I know it's more down the road on this efficiency study, but it talked a little bit about consolidating some of the leadership. And I don't know if you wanted to mention that you're meeting with the Masco, some of the Masco School Committee members this week?
Yeah, they had reached out. They wanted to just have a conversation, gather some insight and input just on their process. So I have a meeting with them on Friday to hear what they want to discuss. I'm happy to engage in any conversation with them.
And for those that don't know, the Masco Superintendent has announced that he won't be renewing his contract. So it doesn't mean that, you know, we're looking to consolidate now. It's something that could be down the road. They could simply be asking if you want to be part of the search team for a new superintendent, which I would definitely be a favor of. But, you know, I think it's positive to just, you know, throw some ideas around.
Yeah, just have a good conversation.
And as I've told you before, that because many of, most of the students that are, the families that are now at Masco had the experience in Tri-Town and have, you know, very positive, you know, when they reflect on their time in the Tri-Town, it's, you know, overall very positive. And have heard some wonderful things about you as a superintendent and what they appreciate about how this district is run. So I also appreciate that they're looking for, you know, some input or some guidance as to maybe what the next superintendent, you know, should bring to the table.
I'll keep you guys tuned in at the November meeting for sure. Give any updates that I may have.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yep.
Full Meadow, commenting circulation. So Dave and Jeff and Mike and I and Steve, in different capacities, have been kind of monitoring this since really the start of school. Our big concern at the beginning of the year was Full Meadow circulation. We had a lot of eyeballs over here, and we had Captain Armage over here as well and really kind of keeping an eye on things and just really hoping that things didn't leak out onto 114, knowing that we were losing Angelica's this year. And we did a couple of trial runs, as we recall, at the end of last year. It worked well, and it's a pretty well-oiled machine with the team over here at Full Meadow. And so it's been, I think, up until now, Mike's still going well.
Got zero issues.
Great. That's outstanding. And then at How Manning, as we know, it's, you know, it's a tight circle or a tight block, tight square, I guess I would say. Jeff and his team orbit How Manning, continues to do an excellent job in terms of just trying to keep that line moving. They'll never not be traffic over there. Like, it's, you know, there's always gonna be a parent pickup line. It's more about how we can move it as quickly as we can and really trying to put in some of the mitigation things that we have been supporting the town in and meeting and having conversation on. And Jeff, I think things continue to improve. I don't know if you have any updates from the last time we talked. And then Dave, any thoughts on that topic as well, please? And thank you.
No, it definitely has improved. I mean, the first week or so was tough. I think there was a day we made it out to, all the way out to 62 off of Washington Street. But that was a rarity. Now the kids are back, particularly the third graders are kind of into the routine of where they sit in the cafeteria, where soon as their name's called, get out to the sidewalk and get in the cars. You know, I went out and counted for about a week and a half the total number of cars. And I think it's actually remarkable that my staff gets... We were averaging about 110 cars every afternoon. And, you know, we're starting at 2:55 and we're done by 3:10, 3:15. So we're getting 100-plus cars through there in under 20 minutes, which I think is pretty impressive. Our problem continues to be, before we start dismissal process, we have cars already lined up. And that's where the backup really happens. It doesn't hap... Once we start moving, the backup goes very quickly. It's just getting to that point. That's the struggle right now. But even today, I don't... We didn't even see any cars back on Central Street in front of the school because, again, we started some after-school activities today.
Right, you had mentioned that last week.
And so there was a ton less cars that came through. So it's just, there's a lot of cars and a lot of ton of space.
And in a short amount of time. And Dave, we appreciate you sitting in on that meeting with Captain Armage. It's Jeff, myself, Kevin. Any thoughts you have on that?
I mean, for me, it's really about child safety. I think that we've met many times, we're trying to mitigate the traffic. But at the end of the day, it's about the kids being safe, getting in and out of the cars. And I know when we spoke to Captain Armage, that was that one day that traffic got backed out to 62. But at the end of the day, that's like the beginning of school, right? Everyone's getting acclimated. Things don't run as smoothly. Probably as the year progresses, it probably won't be as bad. But I think, you know, the traffic might always be an issue there. But I think, like, the town is also committed to doing an additional speed hump at the top of that street. And I think they've done a pretty good job of mitigating at least a lot of the safety issues. And I know Jeff and your team does as much as they can to mitigate the traffic. But I think it's kind of almost inevitable at certain times, we pick up and drop off that we have a little bit. But I think we've done as much as we can.
Yeah.
Try to continue that.
If you get a chance, Jeff, in the next couple of weeks, now that the after-school program will start, I'd be curious to see, are we 135 to 100? Are we 135 cars to 120? You know, I'd be curious to see sort of what that... That number is down, but it sounds like it just by eyeball today went quicker.
Like, nothing but standing on the corner.
I know, with a clicker. Exactly. High on the list.
Yep.
Like you said, if you could solve that, we'll put you on some state committee to solve traffic across the...
395 interchange is next.
And then finally, for me, any questions on that for anybody?
Yep.
Good, good. Middleton Citizens Academy, I mentioned this last month as well. Jackie Resnahan, Assistant Town Administrator. She's putting together a Citizens Academy just for the citizenry to learn more about the different departments of the town. I don't know how many she has. I think she has maybe 40 people who are interested. And police will present one night, fire, library, schools. So I'm presenting on October the 16th to whoever that group is. Just talking a little bit about how we function and operate as a school as part of the Tri-Town School Union and what our vision, our pillars are, and a lot of things that we often talk about in these meetings in terms of, you know, how we continue to be a place where people want to come to. So I will share more about that at the November meeting in terms of how that went. So a lot of updates, but a lot happened in this past month.
Would there be an opportunity within even that presentation, like Mary Ellen? Wait, that's her name?
Yeah.
Who was saying? Just helping to educate everybody on our mission and, you know, and why it's important that things become more efficient. And would there be...
Oh, yeah. That's in the slideshow, I'm sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Helping the town understand that, especially families who don't have kids in the school.
Right. Or not just stop regular board and committee meetings.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that'll be helpful.
Yeah. A lot of people, it's funny, when I'll talk to a parent that might be here with town and, how long you been in town? Oh, five years, six years, whatever. You know, you know that we're one of three? No, I was at Middleton.
Yes.
You know, it's... And I'll get... It's funny, like, Michael will get emails for Tri-Town. I'll get emails for Masco. So there's always those as well. I think it's just, it's an odd model.
Yes.
You know?
Next is report of the Assistant Superintendent.
All right. Good evening, everyone. What's included in the drive is a financial report for October. Things are going along as normal. One thing I do want to share, and I'm gonna continue to share this for the school committee, for the leadership team as we're going forward and we head into the budget process, that we will be looking at a spending freeze. And I will be bringing that to the leadership team with specifics on how we'll manage that. And that will probably happen before Thanksgiving. Right? And the reason why is it's to keep an eye on things for this fiscal year. We've got a couple of things going on that may not be budgeted, but we also want to look at how we navigate FY '27 and FY '28. And so if we hit the applied income lines, those revolving accounts, really hard in FY '26, and we're not able to replicate that in some fashion in '27 and '28, it's gonna create a fiscal challenge for the committees in the future when developing the budget process. Couple that with a guideline of 2% and 2.5%, including a 20% increase on health insurance premium, that's a challenge. So it's important for everybody to know this, that this is coming. And, you know, when we talk about a spending freeze, it will take us to another layer of scrutiny where there may be requests for purchases on the operating budget, the general fund, on certain revolving accounts. And it will take it to another layer of scrutiny where, okay, if we can live without it, we're gonna live without it. If it's something that is absolutely needed, then we'll take care of it. Emergencies, of course, will be taken care of. But it's important for everybody to understand that this is coming. It's the first time we've had to do it in a long time. But I think it's a prudent move when we look at where the challenges we could have in the budget process for '27 and '28. So I will stop talking and answer any questions a committee may have.
Are there any unbudgeted expenses that you've seen that you just are saying flat out no to? But did you know of anything that might, may have come up this year?
Not yet, no. But, you know, we, you know, we want to keep an eye on special education. You know, because even though we, I think we have a positive perspective on where that could be in future years, it only takes one situation. And that's as far as I really want to go without violating any confidentiality, any of those things. But it's something we want to keep an eye on. And if we have some things breaking our way, we want to take advantage of it or so that we can not have to take as much in the revolving accounts for '27 and '28. That's gonna be the... That's really what's on my mind.
Jackie and Michelle and Steve, I'm just trying to go through my calendar. When did we last meet with the liaison group? Wasn't it like a 5:00 meeting one afternoon?
We have one on the calendar.
Oh, we do have one.
And I apologize, I'm gonna have to reschedule.
You guys remember when it is? I couldn't find it.
Yes, this month.
It's this month?
It's the 22nd.
Oh, perfect, okay. I'm trying to make sure we have something on that. I do, yeah.
But I'm gonna have to reschedule, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I can make that as of now. But if we need to reschedule with Michelle, we can do that.
Michelle, would you prefer we reschedule or would you...
I know that I can't make it. I mean, do we have anything to bring to them or discuss?
General updates. I think it's probably a little bit of that and just anything that they might have been talking about they might have been talking about for the past couple of months between FinCom and select board.
Yeah. Um, I could, I, I do have availability that morning. Um, I don't know if that would be any better, but we, after the meeting, we can look at each other's calendars and see what might be better.
Yeah.
I also potentially have firm call warnings. So, again, we can connect.
Okay.
After that. Any other questions on that topic?
Uh, next thing in the drive is the FY '25 end-of-year financial report that we submit to the state or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education every year. It's an accounting, a specific accounting of how we spend every dollar, general fund, grants, revolving accounts, as well as school-related expenses or charges that would come from the town. So, if you are so interested, please feel free to dive into that report and look at those details. It has been submitted to our auditor for the annual audit that's required. And the only thing Jackie and I have left is just your autograph on the certification statement.
She has the paper.
Perfect. And, uh, it's already been submitted to the state and I'll answer any questions the committee may have on that.
The tab we're supposed to be looking at if we're deep down.
Any of them. It's, it's really, there are, there are several tabs. So, first is the, the, what they call the EOIR. That's all the information flows up into that. And then layers of detail. So, Schedule 3, Schedule, I think it's 18, Schedule 20.
Okay.
All those are layers of detail that feed into that EOIR tab. And then there's a Reports tab. So, if you're looking for certain types of statistical data and how money is spent, it's summarized, but it also answers other questions, uh, that communities have asked over the years. That information is there for you. And then there's just an edits tab that's really for me when I'm doing the report, uh, if there are any issues that formulaize or something.
Thank you.
Steve, when we talk about a quote-unquote chart of accounts, just while we have both of these documents in front of us, the finance report and the end-of-year report.
Yes.
Could you just point the committee to one of those reports just to kind of better understand when you talk about this chart of accounts and how everything you do is based upon this end-of-year report and we have to work backwards from there?
Glad to. Dr. Morrison, nothing makes me happier than talking about accounting stuff. All right. So, if you look at our financial report and you get to the, the Detail tab of every account line, right? And when you look at it, you'll see on the far left, there is a long account number and then the account description, right? That account number is just not a random number. It is broken down into segments and those segments feed, satisfy the state requirements for the end-of-year report. So, when you look at the end-of-year report and you see how I'm categorizing those expenses, I'm able to categorize those expenses because of the account number structure. All right? How Manning, grade three, consumable expense. The account number that we have for How Manning CCIM speaks to that and I'm able to put it in the appropriate expenditure line in the report. So, our account number, there's a purpose for our account number structure and it satisfies what we have to do for the state report. That's different. My account number structure is different than what Town Hall needs and their account number structure and the kind of reporting they have to do. It's a different thing altogether. So, it's like an apple and an orange. So, when we talk about working on an efficiency, uh, which would hopefully take care of some duplication and then those kinds of things, it's trying to marry or bridge two different account number structures. I think that's a fair way of saying it.
Is that Munis for the state, for the town side?
Well, so the town, it's, they use Munis. That's the software.
Right.
So, whether it's Munis or it's Infinite Visions, and they're both Tyler products, it's, it's my account number structure. So, when you look at it and you see this three sequence, four sequence, three sequence, three sequence, four sequence, three, Town Hall could be like eight and eight, but the meaning is different for them. Like, their meaning could be as simple as, with all due respect to Town Hall, of course, salary expense, non-salary expense for general fund, where I have 300 different descriptions for the general fund expenses, cause I have to. They may not have to. So, it's about trying to find the efficiencies in that. Um, and maybe hopefully, possibly having one account number structure that takes care of both. That's, that's, is that a fair way?
Yeah.
That's the discussion.
Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Moving on. Your report of the principals.
Well, I hope I can match the enthusiasm of Mr. Greenberg when he's discussing the count number sequences. Um, September was busy. We had our Data Days, uh, September 18th and 19th, when all of our classroom teachers meet with our curriculum coordinators and interventionists and go over the beginning of the year, um, data and make those groups. Uh, we had open house, September 25th and September 29th, which were very well attended. We had a lot of people, um, at all of those. Um, our sixth grade spent two days, the 29th and 30th, at Project Adventure over in Beverly. Um, always a great time and I think, uh, eye-opening for a lot of them that walk in on the first day and start talking about how, "Oh, I'm going to climb that one. I'm going to climb that one. I'm going to climb that one." And then when it's time to climb them.
Maybe not.
Maybe I'm not as daring as I thought. And those that were nice and quiet and didn't say a word are the ones that shoot up and across, but, um...
How high, how high up is it?
Some of them are about 40 feet up.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, they're up there. Um, and they're not, some of them are, like, there's a rock wall. There's one that is basically a, a log between two trees that they can walk across. And then there's other crazy ones where there's tires and they go up through the tires and come down. It's, um, it's a pretty neat thing. The first day is all, um, cooperative games and then some, um, low activities. Um, they have, you know, wires and beams that are about two feet off the ground. And then second day, they go, kind of, it's a bit of a, uh, an evaluation for the Project Adventure staff to see what they think each group is going to be good, which apparatus will be good for them. Um, and they go to work and spend all day the second day climbing. So, a lot of fun. Uh, we have Picture Day coming up, October 8th, uh, will be the main day. The 9th will be for some makeups. And then in November, there'll be a Retake Day for the ones that had their eyes closed and everything else. Parents in our current fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, MCAS student reports will go in the mail on Friday. We'll put them in the mail on Friday. So, I anticipate Saturday to Monday, um, appearing in people's mailboxes. Seventh grade parents who took sixth grade MCAS with us, those will come home from Masco. Uh, we have our Fun Run coming up on October 16th. Parent-teacher conferences, the 23rd and 24th of October. Those are two early release days. Um, conferences will be in the afternoons. And the annual, becoming annual How Manning Costume Day, uh, will be, uh, October 24th as well. And I'm aware that Halloween is on Friday, but we are not doing that on Halloween. Halloween is difficult enough. Um, in an elementary school, we're not going to throw in costumes for a full day. So, we do it on the half-day so we don't have to deal with lunch and recess and everything else. But I think it's a lot of fun. And if the teachers are not wearing shirt and tie and their best business attire at, um, conferences on the 24th, they were perhaps dressed up for the day. So, cut them a little slack. Um, and I, and, oh, Howie has a new baseball card. And I apologize, I have a stack of them on my desk to, to bring over here tonight and they are still sitting on my desk. Um, so I will get those to you for the November meeting.
New from what you gave me this summer or the blue one?
When did I give it to you?
This summer, I think.
No.
Okay.
We just got it last week. Um, so, so now he has two. He has one from last year, one from this year. I'll bring them next for the November meeting. Uh, Mr. Greenberg, you'll be interested to know that Dr. Licava has his own card.
I have my own already, the new one.
He came over to How Manning to see us.
Okay.
You know, Ross, Mr. Greenberg was upset that he did not have one yet. So, I told him where they were. Uh, and last, happy birthday to Mr. Drone.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Did you know that was coming?
And did you know Matt was singing?
No.
That's why I have the mic.
He's got the mic.
Later, Mike. After the meeting. There are cupcakes in the AT's as well.
Okay.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's been, uh, Full of Meadow, it's been a busy September as well. We have, um, school pitches have already taken place. Um, last Tuesday, we had Johnny the K come in and, and sing to the children. Uh, that was put on by our PTO. Uh, later that evening, we had open house. That was on September 30th, which also was a, a gigantic showing. Um, Data Day starts tomorrow, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Parent conferences are the same as How Manning, 10:23 and 24. On 9/26, we also had professional development. We are Full of Meadow and How Manning got together and Dana Gastich-French presented on English language learners. I think that was a pretty well-received PD. Uh, the Boost-a-thon kicked off today and it, it concludes on 10/16. And Mr. Bryson and I have a friendly wager. The losing principal gets a pie in the face.
Oh.
So, that'll be exciting. Think that's about it?
Is it specific pie or apple or whipped cream or...
Loser gets to choose.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
I'm going lemon and meringue.
Blueberry? Yeah, lemon and meringue. That's good. Perfect.
I have a question, follow-up, and now I cannot think of what it is. Hold on a minute. Nope, if it comes back, I'll ask later. Um, anything else that you wanted to add?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, now on to new business. Any gifts and grants?
I don't have any in the drive. You guys don't have any late-breaking ones, correct?
Okay.
Correct?
Okay. Um, FY '27 budget.
Mr. Greenberg, a discussion you would like to have with the committee?
All right. FY '27 budget. I know that we've, we've had some discussions in that town. What we're hearing right now from the select board is a guideline of two or two and a half percent, and that includes health insurance. So, when we think about contractual obligations, salary, non-salary, 20% increase on the insurance premium, uh, along with that kind of a guideline, that is going to be a very interesting budget process. I'm already in the, developing the next year's budget since, you know, we, we know what our, our salary obligations will be. Um, so that budget is being built and the goal is to have the first draft of the budget to the school committee, uh, in November. It will be fine-tuned. We'll be doing more fine-tuning, but it's to give you an idea of where we're at. With regard to the process itself, and this is where we're looking for the school committee's feedback, that on the non-salary expenditures that we don't have specific information for, usually we would go through an appendix process. It would be very democratic. People would tell, we do needs-based budgeting. Start with zero. What do you need? Apply cost to it and advocate for it. We're going to do a different process this year. And what we're going to be doing is taking FY '25 actuals, applying an escalator of about 3% to those 25 actuals for non-salary expenses and presenting that for the FY '27 number. When I look at all of these things, you know, so we're not beating around the bush, that we're, we're probably going to have to cut. We're going to have to make some cuts. When you look at all of the factors, if we're looking to meet that guideline and not have an override, I think that's, I don't think we have a lot of options. So, it, it just want to make sure I get some feedback from the committee as we're well underway developing that budget. And, uh, yeah. Anything, sir, that I'm missing?
No, I think just feedback from the committee on if that's a path. I mean, that's what we're sort of hearing from our FinCom and select board reps, right? In terms of maybe, like you said, the appendices going away, but just wanted to hear what the team had to say.
Yeah. I definitely like that we're starting it earlier. And I think that, given that we're announcing publicly that, you know, it's going to be a tight budget cycle, um, so the community isn't, you know, shocked when it comes, you know, springtime. Um, and it also gives us more time to kind of be creative about things, you know, and, um, you know, wrap our head around different ideas of how to do things. You know, I, I can say for myself, I, I don't want to have an override for next year. That would be three years in a row. I, I think it turns into maybe a habit at that point. I, I, I don't want that to happen.
Yeah. Steve and I have had that same conversation.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think that we just need to really look at what we absolutely need and what, like you said before, what we can live without. And, um, you know, I, I welcome the community's input, just like last year when through the budget process. And if that can happen sooner, then, then great.
When you say, uh, 3%, you said two and a half percent increase. So, is it be around two and a half percent? When you say, take the existing cost and go 3%?
Yes.
Even that half a percent, is it going to be between the two and a half and three? Like...
Well, I, I'm using 3% for the cost escalator on those specific types of expenditure lines that we don't have a contractual obligation for. So, even when I say 3% to you and then we have a two or two and a half percent guideline.
Yeah.
It's not like, okay, I'm trying to go a little more than what they're asking for. It's, it's just a percentage on that specific line. When you look at the, the value, the total value of all of it.
Yep.
You'll see where it compares against the two and a, the two or two and a half. It's, yeah. You know, that, that's...
I just think that across the board, like, last year was over 100 overrides in the state for, like, statewide, right?
Sounds better.
So, so is, and I, this is probably a broader discussion. Why, why is it, and I know this is a town meeting, but why isn't there a discussion with, on the state level? Is anybody coming to...
I agree with you 100%.
Like, so, in my opinion, I think those discussions do happen. At the end of the day, it's more money. That, where's the money coming from? That, that's really what it is. You know, um, people, I sit there in another town with a, a finance committee member who's just hammering away on, uh, foundation budget and nets, uh, cost, I'm sorry, per pupil expenditure, and we should get more. And this, and it's like, okay. But at the end of the day, it's unlimited wants versus limited resources. And Middleton Boxer, Topsville, the three affluent communities, they don't get the same kinds of consider- financial considerations that other communities may get.
The Fair Share is the, is that the millionaire tax? The Fair Share?
Yep.
So, there's a, M.A.S.S. has a, a letter that they're working on. "We the undersigned right to you, may have a thousand of students. Um, we are writing to demand decisive state action in the FY '27 budget using available Fair Share surplus funds to address the fiscal crisis facing our public schools." I think this goes to what you were talking about today in terms of all these places needing overrides. "It's increasingly clear that public schools across our state are facing significant fiscal challenges caused by severe flaws in our school funding policies that are rapidly undermining our students' constitutional right to high quality and fully fund public education. From all its sources, it's not kept pace with the growing demands for program services and staffing to adequately meet students' academic, social, emotional, mental health needs. Federal ESSR funds have been spent and actions in DC could threaten budgets. Prop 2.5 has stalled many communities' ability to raise revenues under state chapter 70, while increasing overall thanks to the Student Opportunity Act has proven inadequate." So, they're, I think, trying to get a bigger share, you know. You're right, that conversation around two and a half, I mean, I couldn't agree with you 100%. It's, how old? 40 years old?
Doesn't work.
82, I think was Prop 2.5. So, it doesn't work. Uh, I would agree with you. And then districts are left to, you know, fight, fight for their selves. So, if the state could help with the Fair Share money, that would be, uh, a potential answer to the question. But, um, yeah, the two and a half is, will be a challenge for sure.
The Fair Share money, was a lot of that put in the general fund?
I think, Dave, excuse me, Joe, it went to a combination of things. I think it was supposed to go to education and transportation. So, like the MBTA and then education. But education is defined very broadly as KDA, college, end of college. So, I think a lot of it last go-around went to higher ed. So, there's a lot of, it's two main buckets, but I think there's a lot of hands in those buckets. Yeah. I mean, it's funded beyond any hope that they thought it would be funded at in terms of that tax. I mean, is, I, I don't know the exact numbers, but I remember reading article on it, being like, wow, that is, so it'd be great if they could throw some to the local schools and districts way to help offset the burden on the taxpayer with all of these two and a half overrides that, you know, we keep having to knock, knock on the door with. So...
Could we invite one of the reps in here to talk about it at the school meeting?
Yeah. Fair Share or like a Bruce Tarter talk just about, as a local.
As a local?
Yeah.
Just to kind of educate us.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll invite, if that's fine with the chair, I can, uh, reach out to Bruce and have him come to a future meeting.
And would he be the same person to speak on behalf of, like, the, is, is it chapter 70 that's supposed to be funded at a way higher rate than, than it is? Would he also be the person to speak on?
He would be. Yeah, Bruce is a wealth of knowledge. He could talk about all of it.
Yeah. Or who helps advocate for chapter 70?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll reach out, see if we can get him to the November meeting.
It'd be great.
Yeah. Send a note right now.
And Steve, I just think that it's helpful. Like, when we first heard the two, two and a half, like, that was devastating and it still is. Um, but the more you keep saying it, the more it sinks in and the more it's reality and it's helpful for people to know this far in advance, especially rather than getting hit in the face with it and, you know, when we start the planning. So, um, and people have the opportunity to listen. People have the opportunity to attend. Um, so it's certainly not going to be information that's not out there come, come budget season. So, that's helpful for me to, for you to just keep saying it, um, with what we're working with. Cause this is not stuff that Middleton's heard in a while. Any other questions or comments on that topic?
Let's just all hope that insurance comes in at less than 20.
Yeah, that would be huge when, yeah. And, you know, other drivers, right? We don't have yet enrollment.
Yeah.
Right? We don't have, NASDAQ will come in around Thanksgiving. Staffing, I'm sure Brian is starting to get some phone calls this time of year about, "Hey, I might be retiring at the end of the year." And those phone calls start to come into HR around this time of year. And then we start having conversations around if someone's going out at a higher level, do we set a limit on hiring, right? Is it a, nothing higher than an M7? We've done that in the past years to try to adjust. So, there's enrollment and staffing things that, um, you know, we'll be navigating as well. So, all of those things will feed into the budget for sure.
That reminds me of what I did want to ask for principals, um, hiring. Is there anybody that you're still looking at, positions still open?
Building base sub-position open and structural assistant position open.
Okay.
Good.
You're hired. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, next is Policy Subcommittee.
So, thank you to Dave for his continued work on the Subcommittee. It's Dave, Aisha, and Boxford, and Candace and Topsfield. So, we had some leftovers from the end of last year that we had to navigate through. Um, and then Antonet and I... and then Antoinette and I will go through the next newsletter we received from MAS with, you know, all of the dozens of other policies that they want to bring to the forefront this year, and we will look at them to see if they match our goals and objectives in the tri-town, and what language we might want to change or accept. But a couple that I want to bring to the committee's attention, so if you go into the policy folder in the drive, and just as a, to kind of shake the rust off of this endeavor, we have to approve each of them individually, so there's four altogether, and then one for discussion at the committee. And then, before we enter any, into any of this, Policy BGB, which is the policy that talks about how you approve policy. We have a Subcommittee who does all the hard work, so we can kind of move this through the three towns at a good pace. And so the first thing we would need would be a motion to waive Policy BGB for tonight.
I will make the motion to waive Policy BGB.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Great, so let's start with ADF. If you can double-click on that one. This is the Public Schools Wellness Program. This speaks to food services, competitive bidding, school meals, physical education and physical activity, and recess, and having phys ed standards in our phys ed program, and competitive food and beverage standards, and nutrition and food literacy education. And so this was a policy that we've had on the books. It was very dated. Sharice, as the Food Service Liaison, received a grant, worked with the Stalker Institute to totally revise this policy. So the Stalker Institute has totally gone through this, the Policy Subcommittee has totally gone through this. DESI has actually read through it as well, that was part of the Stalker Institute work that they did. And so this policy has been updated well, the Subcommittee approved it as presented, and we'd be seeking a motion from the Middleton School Committee to approve Policy ADF as presented.
Can I just ask a question?
Of course.
What's the difference between the National Physical Education Standards and the Frameworks?
Yeah, so the frameworks are built off those standards.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how they build our local frameworks.
Okay, so a motion to approve ADF.
I will second that. I have to make a motion?
Yeah, I need you to...
Make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Policy ADF.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Great. EHAA, District Security relating to Technology. This policy came before you last year. I don't know if the date's on there or not, I don't think it is. So it came to you last year at some point. And in going through the policy, we had some pieces around what's called a WISP. If you look at the red language there in the third paragraph, procedures that the committee will undertake will include as appropriate a written information security program. That's in compliance with the Commonwealth of Mass Regulations Number 17. And so I thank Julie Kelly, who is here right now. Hi, Julie. Julie's here for TCU, but she's early, so you get a policy shout-out at this meeting. And so basically, the WISP talks about our data privacy team, the work that Julie and her team does to maintain privacy of personally identifiable information, our risk mitigation procedures, external risk mitigation procedures, our operational protocols, if there was ever a breach of security, and what our protocols would be for all of those things. So this WISP is now accompanying this policy. It's been all reviewed and approved by the Subcommittee, and we'd be seeking a motion to approve EHAA as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve EHAA as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, moving on.
IHAMA, this was a policy Dave kind of worked on all, good part of last year with the committee, appreciated all his input and feedback on it. We came to a good spot with this policy. This is parental notification relative to sex education. So just after living with the policy for a year, just some feedback from the principals on that second paragraph. It talked about at the beginning of each school year, all parents and guardians of students who'd be notified of writing courses in curriculum impolving human sexuality. There's just a clunkiness to that at the beginning of the school year, and so the principals had asked if we could change it to just prior to any lessons, which just is more doable. And so in reviewing that, and we would cross out the line that says parent guardians who enroll after the start of school, because again, if we're doing it prior to any lessons, any students would be in school. And so that's a minor change to this policy, only change to the policy review and approved by the Policy Subcommittee, and we bring it tonight for the Middleton School Committee to consider as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy IHAMA as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. You might have to make this one a little bit bigger, because it kind of photocopy not great. But IHBF, this is our homebound instruction policy, so the current policy is on the top, and there were some changes from MAS there. What I'd like to point your attention to is the policy on the bottom. Candace, one of our Policy Subcommittee members, did some work on this, brought it back to the committee. And so this is basically, if we have a written order from a medical doctor, and I'll come back to nurse practitioner in a minute, that a student has to remain in the home or hospital for a period of not less than 14 school days, so more than 14 school days in any school year. It's incumbent upon us to make sure that we are providing educational services in the home or hospital. So the one other change that we made to this was nurse practitioner. I sent this to Legal to take a look at the way that, because we did a sort of a rewrite that was different from what MAS was recommending. And in our rewrite, I said, let me have Legal check it. Legal checked it, and their feedback was just add in nurse practitioner as well, because that was a recent court case, that it was either a medical doctor or a nurse practitioner. And so the committee reviewed this and approved it, and we bring it to, the Subcommittee rather approved it, and we bring it to the Middleton School Committee tonight for your consideration.
Make a motion to approve Policy IHBF as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And this last one is for discussion only tonight. If you can go to Topsfield Policy JICJT. So at the summer Topsfield School Committee meeting, we've talked about that book, Anxious Generation, in the past, and there was some conversation, continued conversation in Topsfield. And they wanted to, although the state is pursuing some type of a cellphone, cellphone-free policy at the state level, they wanted to get out in front of it and have a, as you can see in front of you, an away-for-the-day personal connected device policy. And so, as you can see in that top paragraph, to support a focused and respectful learning environment, students are not permitted to use or wear personal electronic devices during the school day. This includes but is not limited to cellphones, smartwatches, and any other device capable accessing the internet cellular service, sending messages, or taking photographs. And then there's some bullet points there as to what that would look like, and what would happen, you know, first offense, second offense, so on and so forth. So committee worked on it at their August meeting, they brought it back to their September meeting, we sent it home to families, and said if anyone wants to comment on it, please come to the September School Committee meeting. There was no feedback on the policy. According to the principals, we had a Topsfield School Committee meeting last Thursday, and the principal said this has been seamless on their end, there really hasn't been a lot of, it's really not the phone so much, like, that's more of a middle, high school thing. I think there's not a ton of phones that come out here during the school day. I think for, it's more of the watches in some cases, and maybe some texting happening during the school days and stuff like that. But by all accounts, it was well-received in Topsfield, it's been, Policy Subcommittee looked at it, sort of blessed it for Topsfield only, because we really haven't discussed it here, but Dave Zaret, and said he'd like to just bring it here to further discussion at Middleton, Aisha and Boxford Zaret, we'll talk about it in Boxford on Thursday. But Dave, I don't know if you want to add to it, any of the conversation with the Policy Sub, and any feedback from anybody?
Yeah, I like this policy, I think it should be implemented. I think that to stop this policy at a younger age, to get the kids at a younger age where it's less of an issue, right? Like, they're not bringing school, you know, phones to school, but they'll have their watches, but if you implement this at a younger age, by the time they reach old, it'd just be like a normal protocol. I, I like this, that's my personal opinion. I think that cellphones and watches could be a distraction for the students, and I just don't really see a need of them. If you can implement, I'd like to implement something like this.
I thought we already had some sort of policy regarding phones and watches?
About practice, I would say, but not a...
More of a practice, not a, not a policy.
Not a school-made policy. You guys probably have a practice in your school, if you want to talk about that.
It's similar, cellphones have to be turned off and put in backpacks. We had not been as stringent with the watches, it was more, as long as it's being used as a watch...
Yeah.
They could keep it on, but it is becoming more and more, I think, as the, I don't have one, so I don't even know what they're capable of, but I think as they become more and more capable of different things, it's becoming more and more of a distraction. So, yeah, like Scott said, the phones is not, that practice has been in place and has not been an issue. And the pushback we hear on this is safety and being able to track them and where they are, and if we ever had to evacuate, and their stuff is in their bags, how are we going to know where they are? But again, it's, we have, we have structure and policy around all of that as well, and our plans. So I don't, I don't see this big of, as an issue, the safety piece.
And it's not, don't bring it to school, it's just if you bring it, it goes in your bag, and you can take it out when you walk out of the building, and...
I just think the policy delineates, you know, what the offense is and what the, because I mean, you see a lot of if issues with this.
Frankly, my, my only issue with this is the, how the consequences are laid out. I don't feel like it's consistent with the way we handle everything else, where there's more professional, what's the word I'm looking for?
Ination?
Judgment, professional judgment around how we do, I mean, could I think, it would be drastic, but I could think of cases where a student may use the watch, that it's not appropriate to apply necessarily those consequences right there, right?
Does that second bullet address that, Jeff? Is that, if that's what you're getting at?
No.
Okay.
No. It's more in the, in the end, with, if a student is found using the first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense, where, again, not every situation is exactly the same, right? There's context and con, that needs to be considered for everything, so if I, I would have no problem implementing this policy, but I just feel like it may be a little bit inconsistent with our behavior flowchart that we have. And we've gotten away from do this, get this, do this, get this, kind of thing, because it was...
How do you think it should be laid out? What, what would, what would be better?
That's probably beyond me, but I feel like in this, the way this is laid out, is there's no space for our professional judgment when it comes to what should the consequence be for taking it out.
Okay.
Again, that's just my opinion on it.
And we could, could we word it...
You could tweak this.
Different to, because even if, my thought just left me, hold on. You could reference the behavior flowchart in it, and, well, I think if you reference, like, professional judgment, that leaves gray area, and somebody's going to have a fit about that. But that there, it would be addressed in a first offense, second offense, like, not necessarily laying out what first, but that it would be addressed, you know, with escalating consequences, even if not laying it out, because I appreciate what you're saying. Some students, the, however it's used, the consequence is going to be, sorry, that's it, it's gone. And for some students, it's going to be a conversation, a different type of conversation.
Right, because I mean, the, the first offense for not feeling well and texting your mother...
Right.
Is different than taking pictures in the bathroom.
Right. Or using, like, the calculator on your watch during, like, a math test, you know?
Yeah.
So...
Not that I think any of our students would do that. I appreciate what you're saying. And so I am, I'm also game for some type of a policy to address it. The high school that I work at has one, and it's interesting with a high school population to figure out all the nuances with it. But I think it's worth documenting, because everybody is, and we know the state's moving towards, you know, a policy as well. But I like the idea of there being some professional judgment in it as well. We just know if it's gray, then we're going to have to be ready to defend that as well.
I think, I think this is less of a problem in elementary schools. I think it's more of a problem when you hit middle school and high school, and I just think that this, having a policy in place where behavioral, their behaviors kind of starts when they're young, and they kind of go with that. It's easier to limit when they're young than when they're in middle school or high school, so I think judgment does play a huge role in it too, so.
Any other thoughts from the committee? Because we can certainly, hearing so far positive, I mean, we can, see if there's any other thoughts, and then figure out next steps.
I'm curious on like how the policy is now, like, is there any issues in the schools with, like, somebody putting it in their backpack, and somebody else taking it out of their backpack, or, because, I mean, going back, like, dating when I was in high school, like, you know, we did have that issue. You had to put your cellphones away, but then cellphones got lost, and it was actually, I don't know what laws are now, but it was a school's responsibility to replace that phone, because it was a policy that we had to put it in our backpacks. So I don't know, like, obviously, this would have to go through legal, but that is what I'm curious. Is there any issues with that?
Rarely.
Yeah.
I won't say never, but it's rare, and I think it's harder now, I mean, it's fairly easy to find where the phone ended up.
Yeah, right.
But, yeah, we've...
Sorry.
Yeah.
And I think what this policy does too is, personal connected devices, it's not too long before these are completely a personal connected device, and I can just sit here and talk to you and tap, and maybe up here, I'm watching the Red Sox game in the left lens of my glass, or, if you're going to need, or, I can maybe tap and text somebody while I just have my glasses on, so that, that's coming. And so obviously, if someone has prescription glasses, that's going to be a much different policy. That can also be VR, or virtual reality, or whatever, I mean, they already kind of exist, you've seen some of them on TV. But I think that's, it's just giving educators, moving it from a practice to a policy, so then we have something to fall back on, when someone says, well, it's just a practice. Actually, it's rooted in policy, and the school committee's approved it, and this is how it's going to be. So I mean, if we're hearing generally positive feedback, what we can do is take this Topsfield one, and we can take a look at scratching it up a little bit, and bringing it back to the November meeting for this group to take a look at, to see if, see if it matches. Joe, does that work for you too?
We didn't have cellphones in our...
Me neither. Exactly.
Same. I'm feeling left out of this thing.
Perfect. All right, so that acceptable to the team, if we scratch it up and bring it back in November? Great, so Jeff, we'll chat, I'd like any input, I know you're probably not really here, but...
Yeah, we don't really see that issue here.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Good. Thank you, Dave, too, for the work on that.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so that's all with the policy?
Yep.
So now, moving on to the TCU School Committee meeting?
Yeah, just an informational item, just, we have our TCU meeting at 7:00, that starts next in a little bit. And just, there's always three members of the committee that are on that, in case anyone else wanted the information for that meeting, just so you are aware of it. We will do a full deep dive on the Assistant Superintendent search. Brian has put together a whole packet for that, a little video, Julie, I'm hoping you can help me with, that we can show up on the screen there. He did a, he's at a conference, so he did a little video cast, just to kind of explain the whole process. The FY '27 Central Office Budget, and then further conversation around Central Office in terms of an actual space that we've been in, and other considerations that we've been making for that. So that'll be the crux of the meeting, and I think we, Sharice was going to be here to give some updates, but a text just came in a little bit ago that I don't think she can.
Yeah, I'm, I've got her report, Scott.
Great, so you'll be able to do it?
I can.
Yeah.
And I could upload it into the drive?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.